At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We welcome you here this evening with us. Tonight, we have with us Deacon Pat Snyder from Good Shepherd Catholic Church who will be leading us in our invocation, which will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
Let us begin as we do all good things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Peace to all who are gathered here. As we take a moment to pray for God's blessing, let's start by praying for our great nation and our community. In this time of tribulation, we join our hearts to beg for your mercy, oh Lord. Please turn our nation from this culture of death, quell the violence in our streets, inspire your people to stop living in fear, so we can all turn back to you and become the people that you want us to be. Let us pray also for the protection and safety of the men and women who risk their lives every day, so we can enjoy the blessings of freedom in our country and safety in our homes, particularly our brothers and sisters in arms who are deployed in the defense of our nation. Heavenly Father, all legitimate authority comes from you, and you've taught us that civil authority is necessary for the good order of society. You've also taught us that all law and civil authority is subordinate and subject to your law. We beg you to bless this board as they strive to support the residents of Hope Mills. Remind us all, Lord, that we are but servants, and the way we serve you is by serving our neighbor. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigneth you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. And may Almighty God bless this board and all present in their petitions and comments to it, and the hard-working people who support the town of Hope Mills, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I do have an addition to our agenda. And that is a request to add, after official comments, a closed session, wanted to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, attorney-client privilege, and also to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-A6 to discuss personnel management. That would be added to our agenda. Is there anything that you would like added to our agenda, or anything you'd like removed at this time?
Make a motion, we accept the addition to the agenda.
I have a motion to accept the additions, and would that also be to approve the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Do I have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda is a presentation. And I will read that. And this is a proclamation. In observance of the 19th anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 attacks on America, we hereby adopt the following proclamation in tribute to those lost and injured on 9/11, and the many who gave themselves in service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. Whereas people of all ages and walks of life across America and around the world collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11th, 2001, whereas September 11th, 2001 will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all Americans. Whereas the Patriot Day proclamation officially and permanently designated September 11th as the national day of service and remembrance, the flying of the flag of the United States at half-staff, as well as community service and charitable activities in tribute and remembrance. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September 11th as a voluntary day of service and remembrance, and furthermore, call upon all citizens and organizations to consider joining in this observance and to engage in activities of tribute, solemn remembrance, and charitable service. And I'd like to ask our community if you would document those things that you might do on September 11th, and let us know about those. You can share those through email or to our town site. The main thing is, I think it's important for us to use this as an opportunity to do some things, and it could be just helping a neighbor, it could be helping with roadside cleanup, or it could be just doing something simple to help someone in need. But let's do try and help Mills to do something on this special time in remembrance of September 11th and what it meant for those that perished and those that actually came to the call of the need. The next thing we have is public comments. I do have three on my list. Are they here?
There are three outside.
Okay.
I have seven.
To read. Okay. The first one that we have is Maria.
That's her first name. Ram. Ram.
Ma'am, if you'll come to the podium here, and then if you'll give us your first and last name and your address, and then you have three minutes, and you can take your mask down just to speak, because I know it'll be easier.
Would it take it?
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Maria, last name is Aroyo, A-R-R-O-Y-O. And I live in Crenshaw Drive, 5717.
Okay.
The golf course or the pine trees, the lovely pine trees are right behind us. Of course, I left my paper outside, but...
He's got it.
The person that approached me was, the concern, main concern is the traffic, and definitely the traffic is a concern. But I think the most considerate solution would be to use golf bill for the apartments, if it's a done deal. I hope it's not. We were militaries 20-plus years, and after that, we have been living for many, many years in many houses, just temporary. And then the last one was in Florida. We lived 10 feet from wall to wall to the neighbors, like sardines, but we knew the neighbors, our corner was fine, and we survived until the market picked up and we finally were able to sell. And then my husband did a trip here to find a home. One of the things that sold the house to me was the pine trees behind our property. I am able to sit in my patio in my backyard and enjoy the air, the birds, everything, and not counting on the destroying of the bird habitat that is there. So if this goes forward, I am hoping that they have intention of leaving certain amount of pine trees. It serves as a barrier also, but the noise, there is always concern, no matter the rental is what it's going to be, there is always concern that we're going to have, there was crime committed some years ago there. We feel very comfortable right now, though I always insist my husband get used to lock the door. So that's basically it, privacy, the safety, the noise. I don't want to even think when they start construction. We have been there, done that, and it's, at our ages, we were looking forward to settle down. And when we found Crenshaw, that was home for the first, I mean, many years. I put a sign on top of my door that says, "Dreams do come true." I hope that stays like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gerald McGeechee. Will you give us your name and address, and you can remove your mask to speak.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Gerald McGeechee. Address is 4044 William Luther Drive. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Chief Ricardo and his officers. They've been doing a lot of riding in our neighborhood. We had some complaints about speeders, violent traffic offenders, whatever, and Sergeant
talk, because I know it's a lot easier.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Armstrong, 5734 Archer Road.
Joseph, all of these guys have been coming out and patrolling, doing a great job. So thank you. I know they're just doing their job, but thank you.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I have lived in Golf Acres on and off
So I got the good stuff out, and I gave you the bad stuff out. The Ellison Street area, I'm not here to down-talk anyone, but if you ride the Ellison
since I was in kindergarten. I moved away for college and came back.
Street area, just ride it.
I moved away for a job and I came back.
You'll see what I'm talking about. Right across the street is the YMCA, and of course, the Alms House, they're out there
I love this town, and I love the neighborhood where I grew up.
giving and helping people.
Many of the other people who have spoken in favor of closing Crampton Road in the past
And, you know, it's not the best of area, best of the area. Code enforcement, I think they should do a little bit more enforcing what's going
few weeks have cited the safety of their children and grandchildren as a major concern.
on in the area. Again, I'm not here to bash anyone, because I haven't been where I am all my life.
I was one of those children. I walked to Rockfish Elementary.
So if someone could just ride the area and see what we're talking about, maybe code enforcement
I played in the streets. I rode my bike, and I traipsed around the neighborhood with my brothers and friends.
come out there and enforce the codes. That's just simple as that.
Having lived that experience, I wholeheartedly stand behind my neighbors and expressing
And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Elizabeth Armstrong.
concern at the idea of opening the neighborhood to potentially hundreds more cars. It is within the legal authority of this board to close Crampton Road. That is without question. The question, then, is why wouldn't you want to do it? I've heard some of you say, "Other neighborhoods in Hope Mills have to deal with traffic from apartments and townhouses, so why shouldn't Golf Acres and Brightmore?" Because we don't have to. It is within your power to stop that from happening. Right here, right now, you can pledge to put a stop to this, and you're actively choosing not to. I've heard some of you say the developers might sue us if we do it. Is the town not in fact working with the developers on the Golf View driveway plan? The developers are entitled to access to their property, but not necessarily whatever access they choose. How would such a lawsuit have any merit? Is this board more afraid of the prospect of a frivolous lawsuit than the wrath and anger of residents, the citizens, the voters of Golf Acres and Brightmore, who are worried about their safety and quality of life? I've heard some of you say this is all social media outrage. We're misinformed. It's a lot of ruckus for something that's not really a problem. It takes a lot for people to step back from their keyboards, stand up, and speak, and that is exactly what you're seeing now from the residents of Golf Acres and Brightmore. This is not something that we're going to let go simply because you have told us that we should just sit down and shut up. You've all gotten calls and emails from your constituents expressing exactly how important this is to us. As our representatives, it is your duty to listen to us, not to brush aside or condescend to us. I've heard some of you say you should trust us, let the process play out. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but we don't trust you on this. If we do not continue to speak up and advocate in our own self-interest, you have made it clear that you will not advocate on our behalf. If we don't speak up, the developers will get whatever they want rolled out on a red carpet for them, and we, the residents of Golf Acres and Brightmore, will get railroaded. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Starling, who has some letters that were sent to her.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I've provided you all a copy of each comment. Our first comment is from Ms. Nora Armstrong. Dear Ms. Starling, please read this letter. The August 31st Board of Commissioners, in any case, I will not be able to attend. My name is Nora Armstrong, and I live at 5734 Archer Road in Hope Mills. I've lived at this address for 28 years. My house is located near one of the walkways that allow access to Rockfish Elementary, the school that all four of my children attended. You probably know that Archer is part of a cut-through, regular cut-through, for people getting from Main Street just before the underpass to get into Golf View. Traffic has always been an issue in spite of the speed bumps that were installed quite some time ago. I have always worried about the volume of traffic in the afternoon when kids are walking home from school. There is a Duke Energy Power Box located in my front yard, right near the street. In my 28 years here, that box has been replaced at least three times because a reckless driver just curved too fast, lost control, and slammed into it, knocking power out to the neighborhood. There's nothing like waking up at 2:00 a.m. to the sound of a crash and a thud, and coming out your front door to see a car on its roof in your neighbor's yard, and the driver and the passengers tumbling out of the smoking wreck. Thankfully, no one's been killed here, there yet. I want to express my opposition to allowing the developers of the Park Four complex to use Crampton Road as the sole or main entrance/exit to their development. I am worried about what it will do to the volume of traffic, not just on Crampton, but also on Suchack, Masters, and Archer Roads. If people are using our streets now as cut-throughs, then adding 114 units with parking for 228 cars is only going to add to the problem. Doubtless some of our new neighbors will have children who will attend Rockfish, which means they'll be at risk from too much traffic, at least as much as our kids have been, if not more so. A better solution for both the current and future residents is to close Crampton where it ends now. There is a precedent for closing a road. I remember when Mulder was a complete street that ran from Johnson straight through to Rockfish. There wasn't any to-do when that happened, and I don't see why. And if town employees and/or board members should act like it's something that's never been done before, please just do this. Aside from worrying about traffic volume, I also wonder why the board wants me, a taxpayer, to help shoulder the cost of what should be a business expense for the developer, namely, helping to pay for a turn lane from their development home to Golf View. They knew the lay of the land when they bought the parcel. They should have taken into account the infrastructure they would need to build to provide access to the complex. If I bought a parcel of land and put a house on it, would I expect the town to help pay for my driveway? Of course not. So I don't understand why the developers think we should help pay for their driveway. One last thing. Since the election in November 1995, I have voted in 37 elections. I may have missed one or two over the years, but you can look up my voting record. I also serve as an election judge, so you might say I'm a bit more politically active than most residents. I vote, and I remember. I will remember who on the board listens to the concerns of the town's residents, and I will happily support those board members in the future. I don't think that I'm alone in that. Thanks for your attention. Sincerely, Nora Armstrong. This is from Jean White. I'm a resident on Trevino Street and a registered voter. I have lived on Trevino for over 30 years. I am very much opposed to the opening of Crampton Road to access the Park Four apartment complex. I feel this will add excessive traffic running through our neighborhood where children are playing and people are walking. There are already cars speeding, especially on Trevino. Trevino is a long straight of way running from Crenshaw to Gillum. Cars coming from Brightmore at Crenshaw end use Trevino as a speedway. I can only imagine speeding cars will only get worse coming from the Park Four complex. It's not worth putting our children at risk. This also puts additional traffic around the school crosswalks in our neighborhood. I am unable to attend the meeting tonight. I would appreciate it if you would share my email with the Mayor and Commissioners at the town meeting. Thank you, Jean White. This is from Richard Letganow. Ms. Starling, please read this. Following a town commissioner meeting this evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I am Richard Letganow, and I live at 5758 Crenshaw Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina. As of this morning, there are 430 petitioners that have signed the petition not to open Crampton Road into the Park Four Village Complex. We learned last week that Engineer Scott Brown sent preliminary drawings to the owners of the developers. We were told at the same time that the town had not received the drawings. If the town paid for a third of this redesign, I would like to know why the town has not received this requested information. It has been over a month now since the last Golf View driveway committee meeting, with no definitive information being released to the public about this issue. We are being told to just wait until the committee comes to a solution. Our confidence in this process remains very low due to how this started in the first place. We were within one week of this being a done deal without any input from the citizens that live in the areas where this action would have such a severe impact. I respectfully request that all drawings and anything related to the issue of Crampton Road/Golf View be immediately released to the public as soon as possible. Transparency is so important to all at this point. Richard Letganow. Brian Smith, and this is a copy of the same comments that I read to you all on July 6th, or from, that he sent me on July 6th. I read it at an earlier meeting, at least once, maybe twice. Will you please submit my letter for tonight's meeting? I'm a registered voter, and I'm voicing my concerns for my family's safety, along with my fellow neighbor's safety. Thank you, Brian Smith. Ported message. Good morning, Jane. I am wanting to send you some comments for tonight's meeting. I will not be able to attend in person, but if you would present some points of interest from not only me, but all of the surrounding neighbors at this intersection, Crenshaw and Crampton, and also Suchack and Crampton, the Golf Acres subdivision and surrounding neighbors have signed a petition just to show how much we do not need nor want this opening of Crampton. In less than a week, we have had close to 300 people sign this petition. If and when the subdivision is built on the old golf course property, the developer needs to have access off of Golf View Drive. Having the added traffic coming through a small neighborhood to a new subdivision is dangerous. There are multiple crosswalks from Rockfish Elementary, and the added traffic would be putting the children and their parents who walk and ride their bike to school in harm's way. Please, for my family's safety and the surrounding neighbors' family's safety, do not open or allow this opening to happen. Speeding has always been a problem, and through the town of Hope Mills and the Golf Acres subdivision, neighbors working together, we have slowed it down with requests of stop signs and speed bumps. There are still some concerns, but not as many. If a developer has the want to build in the town of Hope Mills, then they should go about it the right way, not trying to put problems on the neighboring community. Thank you, and God bless. Brian Smith, 9102610136. Mike Gillis. Jane, please read this to the BOC tonight. Thank you. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Mike Gillis, and our forever home is at 3616 Crampton Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina. To date, we have 430 citizens who have signed the petition not to open Crampton Road into the Park Four Village Complex. We have relaxed our endeavors to get more folks to sign the petition while we are waiting the outcome of the next Golf View driveway committee meeting. However, we learned last week that Engineer Scott Brown sent preliminary drawings to the owners of developers. We were told at the same time that the town had not received the drawings. We would imagine that since the town paid for a third of this redesign, that the town would have received a copy as well. We are curious as to why the town has not received this requested information. Please advise as to why the town does not receive this information. It has been over a month now since the last Golf View driveway committee meeting, with no definitive information being released to the public about this issue. We are being told to just wait until the committee comes to a solution. Our confidence in this process remains very low, because the way we accidentally found out about the issue in the first place, we were within one week of this being a done deal without any input from the citizens that live in the areas where this action would have such a severe effect. I respectfully request that all drawings and anything relating to the issue of Crampton Road/Golf View be immediately released to the public as soon as possible. Transparency is so important to all at this point. Thank you for the attention to the issue. Michael O'Gillis, M. Gillis04@nc.rr.com, and God we trust. Ms. Starling, Hope Mills Commissioners, my name is James Reed, and I reside at 3709 Masters Drive in the Golf Acres subdivision, and I am writing to you again to reference the closing of Crampton Road. Although I live a little ways from the mentioned street, I realize that the impact from not closing the road will still affect my area of the subdivision. As I mentioned in my previous letter to you, when Brightmore opened in the late 80s, the traffic more than doubled on my street. I feel that the property owners on Crampton, Crenshaw, Suchack, and others deserve more from the town than to be put in the same position as we homeowners that live on Masters, Archer, Trevino, and others were given. Please make Crampton a dead end so we can keep our subdivision kid and Walker friendly. Sincerely, James Reed, homeowner and registered voter in Hope Mills. And the last one is from Riva and Russell, Regent Hard. Hello, Ms. Starling. This is Riva and Russell, R-E-G-E-N-H-A-R-D-T, and we are both registered voters. We do not support the Crampton Road entrance into the duplex community. We don't support it because it already unsafe now with the traffic in the neighborhood, with people speeding through stop signs and over speed bumps meant to slow them down and unsafe exits in the neighborhood due to the traffic. Thank you for your time, Riva and Russell, Regent Hard, and I apologize for cluttering their name. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. And that concludes public comments for this evening.
Madam Mayor, if you'd subside, Mr. McLaughlin has...
An update?
An update.
Okay. I recognize Mr. McLaughlin for an update, so that we can know where we are. We have not had a committee meeting yet, but we do have some information to share.
Yes, that's correct. And just, you know, full disclosure, I think staff has gone to great lengths to be as transparent as we possibly can with, in regards to the jurisdictional authority we do have. As it relates to the current status of the project, the developers did reach out to me today and said that they had their second meeting within themselves scheduled. What is going on is that I think it's very easy to solve the access point that the town of Hope Mills needs. But if you recall, there's three property owners at play, and they're currently working out the access to the second piece of property before they feel comfortable bringing everything back to us. So I think that the smaller meetings they're having within themselves is just to work out the access between the two property owners. But there really isn't that much complication with providing hours. But they did let us know sometime within the next week, they should be ready to bring the plans back. But they did meet once last week. They had them meet and schedule for today. I think they had to reschedule it. But they are working through the processes. But in terms of the current requests, we currently have not received the plan, so there is no set of plans that we can convey. I have talked to several of the people who made the comments at length within the last week or so, and I've committed to, like I said, remain transparent, but to let them know as soon as we basically get whatever we can, I will convey that to the community. I received requests to possibly see if we could reangle the camera so they could see the screen when we're presenting. I don't know if the technology of the camera will pick that up, but what I've done to commit to do is to let them know, whatever we do get prior to the next meeting, I'll give them a copy of the agenda of the presentation prior to. Because what they want to know is, we gave them a copy of the presentation of the last committee after the meeting. They want to be able to follow along the meeting while it's taking place. So if we can't give them the ability to view the screen if they have the presentation prior to, they can look through it while we're in the meeting. I've committed to that as well, so...
And we have to give the 48-hours notice, or we give a notice, because we are having these committee meetings public, so...
out the access between the two property owners. But there really isn't that much complication with providing hours. But they did let us know sometime within the next week, they should be ready to bring the plans back. But they did meet once last week. They had them meet the schedule for today. I think they had to reschedule it. But they are working through the processes. But in terms of the current requests, we currently have not received the plan, so there is no set of plans that we can convey. I have talked to several of the people who made the comments at length within the last week or so, and I've committed to, like I said, remain transparent, but to let them know as soon as we basically get whatever we can, I will convey that to the community. I received requests to possibly see if we could reangle the camera so they could see the screen when we're presenting. I don't know if the technology of the camera will pick that up, but what I've done to, to commit to do is to let them know whatever we do get prior to the next meeting, I'll give them a copy of the agenda of the presentation prior to. Because what they want to know is, we gave them a copy of the presentation of the last committee after the meeting. They want to be able to follow along the meeting while it's taking place. So if we can't give them the ability to view the screen, if they have the presentation prior to, they can look through it while we're in the meeting, I've committed to that as well, so.
And we have to give the forty-eight hours notice, or we give a notice because we are having these committee meetings public, so-
That's correct.
-that again would be, they would know in, in advance. One thing I wanted to mention too is that because the two developers are having to work out their property sharing and how they're going to share property, each has got to give and take. And that's what's, it has nothing to do with the town.
That's exactly right.
We don't have anything to give and take in what they're working on. So you don't want to frustrate the purpose. You want those developers to work this out, and then when they work it out, it'll be brought to the committee.
That is correct.
So it is, it is something that has to be done because of what they have to do in order to come up with a good solution to share property.
That is correct. And I understand the frustration of the community, but like you said, we have mandates that require us to give forty-eight hour notice before the next meeting. I've committed to providing them with the presentation of that next meeting when it appears. So, and, and the rest of it is whether we get a direct phone call or a direct email, we're responding immediately. I'm forwarding my messages to the town manager. We're vetting it through the town attorney. We're actually making sure we do respond in a timely manner because we want to make sure they have the most up-to-date factual information.
And, and I think the other thing I'd like Chancellor for you to verify too, is that we have in no way said we're paying for anything in reference to, we're by, we're paying for a turning lane, we're doing, we're in a, we'll be a three-way partnership when we come to what needs to be done. But right now, we've not obligated ourselves, and, and I don't believe that that should be, uh, we shouldn't frustrate our citizens in thinking that they're going to be spending tax dollars. We do have to have a driveway too.
That is correct.
And that's where I think they're, they're misinterpreting the information that's being given to them, is the town needs a driveway, and we're hoping that that will be a shared road for all three of us to have a driveway off of Golf View.
I think that's a very good point. It would be different if the developer is doing their own individual driveway and we're paying for the cost. That's not something I would ever advocate for. But we're paying a third of the cost for the driveway we would be putting in for our use as well. So that's a little different scenario than a developer who has no ties to the city, who has no ties to our property, and we have no relationship with, and we're doing that. That's not what's taking place here. I think a lot of people are misinterpreting the fact that the access we're talking about off of Golf View is an access we're going to utilize as well. We're just paying a third of the cost that we would have had to pay had we gotten that access by ourselves. And, but as soon as I hear something back, or every time I get an update, I'm forwarding it in. They actually contacted me about one o'clock today to give me the update that I just gave. I am pressing them, just in full disclosure, let them know, like, look, we need to, you know, let's, let's, let's push this forward. So as soon as we get everything finalized with the two individual property owners, we'll give our town clerk the notification to let everyone know, and then we'll send the information out to the public in terms of what the presentation would actually be. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chancellor, uh, has there been some drawings that things submitted that the public's not aware of that we need to make public?
The only drawing that has been submitted to staff to date is the current layout off of Crampton that was submitted to the, the county for consideration. Everything else, we had our main committee meeting. We were just talking about the project. We had a self-committee meeting where it was just an area photograph we were brainstorming over. But to date, we haven't received any sets of plans outside of the original set of plans that shows the actual driveway off of Crampton. But I think that's the part that some people are misconstruing. We don't have a set of the concept plans that are currently being worked through with the two property owners, but as soon as they give them to us, that's when we'll basically convey and present them to the committee meeting, but we haven't received them yet.
And what they're looking at may change.
That's my point. So we don't want to rush it, but one thing the community needs to understand, we have more control because the project can't move forward for approval until you guys put it back on the agenda. So we do have control over, so I don't want anyone to think that just because it's a little lengthy in terms of working out this issue, that the project is just, is just going to get approved anyway. You guys have to actually make a motion to put it on the agenda. From my understanding, I don't see you guys doing that until something gets worked out with the committee. So we do have control over the project moving forward, but where we are right now, they're working through the issues with the two property owners to come up with the final design.
Mr. Marley had a question or thought?
Actually, I, I had a request.
Okay.
And some, the chance, but, um, I know we don't usually respond to public comments, but can I respond to some of the public comments?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I'd ask for permission to respond to some of the public comments. I know that we don't usually do that, but things are just getting so far out of control with the phone calls, the emails, the, the constant pounding. First thing I want to say is, you know, thank you for everyone's comments. From the first night that there was a comment about this, the mayor and this board assured everybody over there that we were going to do everything in our power to help them. I don't understand where the transparency issue's coming from. I don't understand where the non-trust is coming from, but we've done everything in our power so far. We've formed a committee. Just like, I hope everybody is listening to this meeting tonight and heard what you said about, we have the control right now. It's not coming back up unless we bring it up. So we have the control right now. I don't know what the distrust is, but we have the control. I don't know how more transparency or transparent that we can be on this subject. The other thing I had, and I had a question, and maybe you can answer this, but, you know, all I hear is about these traffic issues and these hazards and these concerns. Where were these concerns before this project? If you had all these concerns and all these traffic issues, how many nine-one-one calls for service to the police department for that area has been, has come into the police department? If you're so concerned, I want to hear before this project come about. That's, that's a question I had. And the other thing I would request of the manager, and maybe the manager can direct phone calls, if any of the citizens over there, if they want transparency, if they hear something, because obviously they're hearing more than we're hearing because they're coming up with all these, we're going to pay for this, we're going to do this, this is happening, we got drawings, we got everything else, but we don't know that. So I don't know how they're getting their information, but if they hear something like that, and they want to know the truth and they want transparency, I would direct every one of them to call the town hall and ask to speak with our town manager, and she will be, I'm sure she'll be more than glad to direct their question they have to the appropriate town staff member that can help answer their questions. And I don't know how much more transparent that we can be as a board. But myself, and I, I'm not speaking for anybody else, and I'm going out on a limb here, but, you know, you're telling me I'm not trustworthy, and you're telling me that I'm not working for you, and everything that this board that I've done, everything that I've supported, everything that all these other board members have supported is, has done nothing but help benefit the citizens of this town concerning this project, and I thank you, ma'am.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Marley said, um, every conversation I've had with concerned resident, I have actually openly advocated for them to contact me because every piece of information, especially in, in the spirit of being transparent, every piece of information you're going to get from me is researchable information. So I don't get into disproving something or anything like that. If you have a question, ask me because I'm going to give you code sections. I'm going to give you general statutes. I'm not going to give you my opinion about the project. That's not what my job is. My job is to give an interpretation on a regulation. So I have always advocated for anybody that wanted to know whether in complete opposition of the project, call me, I will give you the information. But I want you to come to me and look at me as a resource for any questions that they may have in the spirit of trying to find out what's really going on. Again, I don't have an opinion about this stuff. If someone wants to know what section of the streets in the ordinance says, I'm going to give them that information. Someone wants to know the status of the project, I'm going to give them that information. So that's where I stand as staff in terms of being transparent.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In the spirit of transparency, last Tuesday, leading up to last Tuesday, a lot of, a lot of citizens had called me or emailed me about the status of the project. So I packaged up a very short email, and the board knows this because you've read it, and I sent it to our town manager. In fact, I think it was one sentence, was the status of the project. She answered, and I shared exactly what she answered, and it was also shared with the board. So I shared that piece of transparency with the people who asked me, who called me and wanted to know where the status was. But just for clarity purposes, the site planning question that we're talking about, that discussion is just between two property owners and their roadways on their properties, which doesn't include the town or any roadway of the town, or any entrance of the town.
I'll clarify.
Yeah.
What my understanding is what that they're discussing, there is a proposal for a entrance off Golf View-
Okay.
-for three access points. One access point to the town's property, one access point to Mr. Bijan George's property, and one access point to the Part Four. My understanding is that it's very relatively easy to address our access point that we would need off Golf View from them. They're working out the access point that's needed for Mr. George's property. I think they actually know what access point they need for the Part Four piece, but they're working that out. So you have an issue where three of, uh, property owners are involved, two of the property owners are working through their issue before bringing it back. But I don't think there's an issue with them working out the access point we need, which is why I don't think we're included in those conversations because there's nothing for them to work out with us. But I have been told today that they're close, and as soon as they have their second meeting, they had a second meeting scheduled for today. Scheduling conflicts, they had to postpone, but as soon as they work this out, they'll come back to the committee with the design that basically is meant for all three. But I think that's the only reason why we're not included in this smaller conversation because there's nothing to work out with us. We have a future lot that we're trying to develop. We don't have a timeline for it. We just need an access point off of Golf View. So that's relatively easy. But it doesn't appear that it's going to take a significant amount of more time for them to work out the issues that they have with each other, and they have told me openly that they're going to remain up to date in terms of providing me information because I have impressed upon them that we're getting pressure from the community. So I do need to get these updates periodically from them. But that's where we are right now.
And I understand it's, it, as long as it's between the two property owners and it's their roadway-
Yes.
-or entrance on their property.
Yes.
Of course, they should, you know, negotiate it out between the two of them because like the mayor said, it could change.
And one thing you have to understand, in terms of the layout, the access is off of Mr. George's property.
Yeah.
So that's why, you know, the access to us is provided off of Mr. George's property. The access to Part Four is off of Mr. George's property. So they're trying to work that out, but I think that's the crux of the issue. I don't think it's an issue that they can't work through, they just hadn't finalized it yet. But it sounds like they're close, and I keep in contact with them pretty regularly, and as soon as I get more updates, I'll, I'll phone them to our town manager to let you guys know as well. But I also, like I said, I have Mr. Letganow specifically. He and I had a very lengthy conversation last week where I basically told him, I didn't know if we could, that camera angle would give him the presentation on the screen, but I'd get him the information ahead of the meeting so he can follow along. He asked me about the plans. I told him we hadn't received them yet, but as soon as we do, I'll let, make sure that, that they get a copy of them. And that's where we are.
All right.
All right.
And one question, or one thing that I'd like to ask of the board in general, because I too have been getting a lot of emails, is that let one source be the responding. If you have questions, then if you give it to Ms. Adams, let Ms. Adams be the respondent. That way, she's getting it from, so to speak, the horse's mouth. And then what will happen is, you can always refer them back to her. When we get duplicate, when, when, today we got duplicate emails of information that they had heard, they had gleaned, and it wasn't true information. If it, if I could have said, where did you get this, and it came from Ms. Adams, then it, everything goes through her. And I think that's important in a situation like this, is to refer them to Ms. Adams. And if they have to go from her to you, that's fine, but right now, each of us gives them our different opinion or passes on our own sentiments, and then what's happening is we end up with a lot of misinformation. So that would be my thought.
Ironically, as Enric should point out, that's my relationship with town manager and, and town attorney. If I get a direct email, I'm sending it straight to Melissa, I'm copying Dan. These are my thoughts. Melissa may respond directly. She may tell me she's okay with me responding directly. But we're basically making sure that the responses remain consistent so that it eliminates, I, I definitely want to impress upon anyone listening, use us as a resource of information. If there is a question about an interpretation you want, call us. You will get information that has been vetted and information that you can research to confirm its authenticity. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have our consent agenda. Is there anything that you'd like moved from the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is old business. It's consideration of ordinance amendment of S twenty twenty dash oh five. During the August seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting, the Board of Commissioners voted to amend the Lake ordinance to allow for the Hope Mills Lake swimming area to remain open until October the fourth this year, and that will be behind tab four.
We just need to make a motion to approve that ordinance amendment. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment S twenty twenty dash oh five.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of acceptance of an annexation request for a washeroo at thirty-five thirty Legion Road and approval of resolution R twenty twenty dash twenty, instructing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application. That's behind tab five. Do we have any questions in reference to that, or do I have a motion to accept this request and approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty?
So, ma'am.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, have consideration of acceptance of an annexation request for Wood Park Lots seven and nine, approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two, instructing the clerk to investigate sufficiency of the application, and these two lots, but the lots where the washeroo is going to be built. Am I correct in that? Yes, okay, so I do, do I have a motion to accept this annexation request and the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two?
So, ma'am.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, to have consideration of accepting the certificate of sufficiency and approving resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three, setting a date for a public hearing and instructing the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning for annexation case number eight twenty twenty dash oh six, Wood Park Lots seven and nine. And, um, do we have a date?
Uh, the date would be the next meeting, but we skipped B.
I sure did, I'm sorry. All right, item B, I skipped item B. We have to make a set of public hearing and instructing the plant, we have to have a public hearing for approve, the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one and the public hearing. Do you have a date for that?
Yeah, it's already part of the meeting in September, but-
Okay. September twenty-first. So in the, in the minutes, we would have September twenty-first, twenty twenty.
We need to go back and-
And so I need to go back and, and make that motion, also setting for item B, setting the public hearing for September twenty-first, twenty twenty.
I made that motion.
Okay, have a motion to set a public hearing for the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one, which would be setting the date for the hearing, for the certificate, certificate of sufficiency, and begin the preliminary rezoning for annexation case number twenty twenty dash oh five. So the public hearing will be September twenty-first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, we did item C. Now we'll go to item D, and that would be to consideration of acceptance certi- certi- Now we'll go to item D, and that would be to, uh, ex- consideration of acceptance certi- certification of sufficiency and approving resolution R. 2020 dash twenty-three and setting a date for a public hearing and instructing the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning for annexation case number twenty twenty dash oh six. And that's Wood Park lots seven and nine, and that would also be on September twenty-first. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Resolution R. 2020 dash twenty-three.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion to approve R. 20 dash twenty-three and also to, um, set the hearing date for September twenty-first. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, have consideration of acceptance of an annexation request for Sweetwater subdivision and approval of resolution R. 2020 dash twenty-five and instructing the clerk to investigate sufficiency of the application.
Make a motion, we approve that, uh, R. 20 twenty-five and instruct the clerk to investigate the sufficiency. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And do we know that they were able to satisfy the issue that they had with the, um, the acreage? They removed that acreage, okay. Okay, and that hearing, um, consideration acceptance certification of sufficiency and approving resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, setting a date for the public hearing and instructing the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning for annexation case number twenty twenty dash oh seven, the Sweetwater subdivision. And that hearing date would also be September the twenty-first.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
About item F.
Okay.
And it goes back, it's probably, well, I won't see a chance or so. It goes back to, I know we're setting a date for the public hearing instructing the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning, but before this annexation, I believe we approved the initial zoning under P. twenty dash thirty-two.
Yet we rescinded it in our last meeting, didn't we, because of the problem with the property that didn't belong to it?
We rescinded the annexation, Mayor, but we didn't rescind the initial.
Go ahead.
If I may, if I may clarify, the, the motion, the, uh, item was to approve the zoning, the preliminary, preliminary zoning. You did not pass it.
The initial zoning.
The initial zoning.
Okay.
You did not pass it. You, uh, made a motion to rescind.
The annexation, okay.
The annexation, but you didn't make any motions related to the.
Okay.
The.
It was a point of clarity, just to make sure.
And that was, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You can, I'm sorry. So that was settled, that was handled, uh?
They've removed that piece of property. I'm not exactly sure what they have settled, but it's not included in this.
But it's not included.
No, it's not included in the annexation or the, uh, or our tw- our twenty twenty dash twenty-six. And Mayor, if there's no other discussions, I can make the motion to approve that.
Have a motion and a second to approve setting the hearing date for September twenty-first, twenty twenty, and that is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six. And it's in reference to rezoning for annexation case number twenty twenty dash oh seven, Sweetwater subdivision. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have, um, discussion and consideration of rules, procedures, changing allowing participation in my prime movers committee by residents outside of the town limits as requested by Mayor Pro Tim McCray, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim in reference to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm asking the board, I know that you all don't, we don't normally do this, but we have seven applications for the Hope Mills Prime Members Committee. Three of those are outside of city limits, and I actually just got an inbox right before this meeting of someone else wanting to participate that I think would be really good, but they live in Grace Creek. And since we are, they are stakeholders, and we're having like gateway, um, studies, and we're trying to get citizens involved, and we do all of those different things, and we're also engaging with Hope Mills, I mean, with, um, Fayetteville Cumberland Arts Council, the VA and other stakeholders that's not actually in Hope Mills. I was gonna ask the board if you would consider allowing citizens that don't, that live outside of the town limits and the MIA areas to participate on this committee.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the problem that we had before, we had a member on one of our zoning boards. That was a builder. And he always did everything for what he wanted, which wasn't the best for the town at the time. And actually, we're having trouble some of his developments now. So I know if we do that, we've gotta do it for everybody that fills out an application, and they're not taxpayers here in the city limits. So that's a tough one right there to have to, have to talk about.
Do you have to do it for all of them if you do it for this one?
I believe there were two options.
I don't think we have to, because we have done it in the past. Um, we had the economic development committee. We did allow uh, people to serve on that committee that were outside of the, the town limits.
I think what we did was they became non-voting members.
But we don't have to have an economic development committee.
We had non-voting members, I remember that.
But we do have, Jane has two, she's got option A and option B in the long year.
Yeah. Madam Mayor.
Uh-huh.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You can come up with a, with alternate line, only these are just two suggestions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Several years ago, we had a long and rich discussion about committees and residents and where they live. And I know that because the committee we discussed at that point was the Veterans Affairs Committee. And it was because of the two seats that we wanted to add to that committee. Those two seats were one from the Veterans Foreign Wars post N. six thirty, and the other one was from the American Legion post thirty-two. Now, those two veteran support organizations would appoint who they wanted to represent them. They did. They would do that. So that was the exception, and it was a lot of discussion, and you remember this, some of the board members remember this, is that we wanted to begin with was to look at the MIA, but if you do it for one committee, you have to be fair and do it for every committee, or you're discriminating the other committees that you don't do it to. And I feel that our committees right now are, are, are made up of people who live in the town. Uh, I know during that time, I, we even recommend, I know I recommended the MIA. Um, and I wouldn't put, even here, I wouldn't put, you know, an MIA with Hope Mills addresses, because we've got a tremendous amount of people who live in the MIA who have other addresses. Uh, my address is a Fayetteville address. Yours is probably a Parkland. You know, so I would definitely wouldn't, wouldn't wanna, you know, single out Hope Mills addresses in the MIA, but we should give this a lot of careful thought and not discriminate between our committees. The Veterans Affairs Committee is, is sound, the representatives there from the veteran service organizations are, are active. Um, but my thought here is, and, and I'll, and I'll be, and I'll be fair about it, Mayor Pro Tim, is if, if we do this, then we have to do it for all of them, not just one or two. Do it for all of them.
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there's a lot of people that get copies of our agenda and everything, and I've had, um, a couple of people who are businessmen or business people in Hope Mills that have applied to be on committees that they felt would be, um, helping them as far as a, a small business. But their businesses here in Hope Mills, but they do not live in Hope Mills, and they were both turned down. And so they sat there watching, so that's all.
Thoughts, and any other thoughts on this?
Like Mr. Bellflower said, if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. Miss Edgar said people are watching, so.
Maybe we should advertise a little longer and see what, let's see what we come up with. I don't know.
I, I, I definitely think that a taxpaying citizen should have the power, or not the power, but the, the ability to be named over a MIA address because of their, uh, city ci- citizens who pay taxes in Hope Mills.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
Another thing is the small businesses, we do get tax revenue from them, but they don't live in Hope Mills. So, I mean, there's two different ways you can look at that, too.
I mean, we've got a barber shop down here that's got two great people there that would like to serve on committees, but they're not Hope Mills residents, and they can't do it.
So would it, would, would they be causing any harm if they help make decisions for the town? If they don't, if they live like in Parkland, or if they had a Fayetteville address, like, are they causing? I agree, if someone else has a, a Hope Mills city limits address, you give them precedence. But if you don't have anybody else applying to be on it, I don't see where it would cause any harm. I mean, I serve on committees through the county, and I don't live, I live in Hope Mills, but I serve on other committees that, that go throughout the county, and I, I figured I would get some pushback, 'cause I kinda felt like this is kinda the way that it's always been done. But I'm asking for an exception to the rule. If we have to change all of them, I'm open to change all of them. But I'll do what's at the pleasure of the board.
Well, you are a county resident as well as a Hope Mills resident.
That's true, but I was just asking, I don't think these people that live in these influence areas would, I think they're stakeholders too. I don't think they will cause any harm by serving on this board. I actually think that it would be an asset to the community, but if this is the way that you all have always done it, and you would like to keep it that way, I respect that.
Yeah, with one exception. And that exception would be my mayor's youth leadership. Because having pulled in Grace Creek High School, I have, um, members from, there's, uh, sometimes I might get one that actually is Hope Mills resident. But Grace Creek High School is pretty much a Hope Mills address, but they don't live in Hope Mills. My Southview kids, I had one that was in the IB Academy that was representing Southview, and they lived in Fayetteville. They went to school at Southview and were one of their leadership. So we, when we addressed that particular committee, my committee has, because of what it is, um, and it's representative of the high schools and that, that age group, I would have to have, I would have to say, we haven't really looked closely at my committee either. Because I, I have re- I have.
Madam Mayor.
They're not the same, they're not really the same as our other committees, but because it's a youth and it's probably getting those opinions of that age group, I don't have, I do have some, I haven't gotten my committee yet, but I would not wanna eliminate, uh, Ha- Grace Creek High School from my group because of, they do participate in a lot of stuff in Hope Mills.
Madam Mayor, I believe that. Grace Creek, Jack Brett, and Southview, I'm not really sure that group you've got's called a committee or should be a committee, because it's a surrounding of children from our area schools, uh, which I don't have a problem with, 'cause that's our future leaders there. Uh, and our, our future people sitting, talking about what we're talking about now.
Right, I was just saying that it's, we call it the mayor's youth leadership committee, and it does have, um...
Maybe we should change their name to group.
Yeah, but is, is it a standing committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was approved. It's a regular committee. It was approved, what, four years? Have we been doing it four years now? I think four years ago. Yes, sir, could you?
I, I, I'm, I'm with whatever board wants to do, but I, I feel like this isn't a regular committee like an appearance committee or a, you know, a, a parts and wreck committee, something, something like that. This is more of a, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, a steering committee to give us recommendations on what a younger population would want to see Hope Mills moving toward.
Right.
Or give Hope Mills ideas. Um, and, and they may be able to bring something from outside of Hope Mills. I, I, I don't see where, I hate to say it like this, and I'm, I know I'm gonna catch it for it, but the board can do what they wanna do. If they wanna allow one committee to have outside members, they, we can do that. If we wanna have committee of nobody but in-town residents, then that's what we can do. I mean, that's, we don't, we don't have to do, you know, I, I'm, I'm wondering, I know the previous board I was on, we had problems with committees, and a lot of committees had outside members from outside the town, and it was a problem. And we had to change it to the way it is now, and that made a lot of people mad. And, you know, I, I, I can see both sides of the fence. I don't, I don't really think there's a problem with this committee having outside members. I don't think there's a problem with your committee having outside members, 'cause it's what it takes to fill that committee. I would say this, the only, the only, the only thing I would say, and like I believe Commissioner Legg said, if you, if we have enough people to fill committees from in the town, they should have first choice before we move outside. But I, I'm, I'm, either way, I'm, you know, that's just my.
What, what problems did y'all have with outside people, people that didn't live in the city limits?
They're not taxpaying city citizens, like you do in your house, I do in my house. We're taxpaying, invested residents. And some of the outside people, I'm, I'm calling them inside and outside, just reference, not as a slander thing toward them. My daughter has a, a Hope Mills Millian dress, but she lives in Grace Creek. I have another daughter that has a Hope Mills Millian dress. She lives off Parkland Road. They can't serve on either committee, none of the committees. But I have a daughter who lives in, on Heather Street, that she is a resident, and she can serve on a committee. So I think their taxpaying status is what it would come down to at the end. And I hope I don't get in trouble for saying that, but we're always saying it's all about money. Well, here it's all about rewarding people for, and we just talked about people living in Hope Mills and what it takes to draw them here and keep them here. So that's one thing that we could, could address is say, that's what draws them here, because they're eligible for committee assignments or to run for this board. You know, if they can't run for this board, they should not be on one of our committees. I don't believe it. That's just my personal belief.
'Cause they don't pay taxes?
Not, they don't.
Is that, is that what the underlying issue is? They're not taxpaying citizens? 'Cause I'm trying to find out what other harm they could do, but not.
Can, can they run for this board?
No, but what difference does that make if you're trying to make, help move the town forward? I mean, you already see, we don't have enough millennials or Generation Z's on our committees in the town. Even with this one, I've got seven applicants, and three of them live in areas that's not actually in Hope Mills. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to push them, trying to get them involved. They may know more people that live in Hope Mills than I do, but they don't actually have a Hope Mills address. I'm not, we're not gonna be doing anything to hurt the town. It's actually to engage them, engage the town, and hopefully engage other Generation Z and millennials. So I don't, I don't think just because you're not a taxpaying citizen, now I can see if you're making decisions like us that affect the taxpaying citizens, but it, it's, it's a committee to actually get millennials and young people involved. And because three of the applicants are MIA, including one that just inboxed me that I think would be a very good candidate that would help us do great outreach and work, I don't see there's anything wrong with it. I'm just asking you to try something. I know you all said you had some issues before. I'm not really for sure what the issues were, but, um, I don't care about changing it for all of the committees. I'm not, I don't really care if we just change it for my committee. I'm just asking you to make an exception to the rule.
Madam Mayor.
And if there's an issue, then we can reconsider.
I've got a, maybe a suggestion.
Okay.
'Cause I, I know where you're at. And I'm, we've debated this many, two years ago, and here we are again. First off, it's not about money with me. All of you know that. Vol- volunteerism is priceless. I volunteered on committees, you have, many of us have. So I wanna look at what's fair for all the committees. If what we do for one, we need to do for all of them. And I think that the, maybe we should look at changing the, the, the membership of the committee itself. For example, a committee that has seven members, four of those members on that committee will be Hope Mills residents, and the other three can come from the MIA area. And if we were to look at it in that light, in all of our committees, then you would have a little bit of both, but the majority of the membership would belong to Hope Mills residents.
I agree with that.
And if you go with that, and we can apply that rule to all of our committees, I can support. And if you go with that and we can apply that rule to all of our committees, I can support that.
I apologize if I made it sound like I thought about money.
No, 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 I just wanted a good, healthy debate. I'm first to fine, Commissioner Legg.
Mr. Marley?
Ms. Edwards has a city.
This is my second time. Okay, I, I can go along with that. I mean, because they're both steering committees and all. But I think that it should be added that if you are a, a business in Hope Mills and you pay taxes and it benefits Hope Mills and the business people here have a lot of interest in Hope Mills and where we're going and what we're doing, that they should also be included in committees that they want to help out. Because they really have an investment in Hope Mills. Even though they don't live in Hope Mills, they have businesses here and they want to get involved in, in what's going on at Hope Mills.
And they buy products in Hope Mills.
Yeah.
They visit our local businesses. Many of them do. Yeah.
Yes.
I, I'll go, I'll go one further for you. Since we're talking about the, say your committee name.
Hope Mills Prime Movers.
Prime Movers. Hope Mills Prime Movers and, and you mentioned your committee that you have. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the board makes an exception for the Prime Movers Committee and the,
Mayor's Youth.
Mayor's Youth.
Youth Leadership.
Youth Leadership Committee. That, uh, we make an exception to allow, um, out-of-town residents to participate on those two boards.
Do we ask for a town attorney's opinion on that?
I don't see any issue with that. I mean, there's, there's no requirement, we're unaware of, that board members require to be tax-paying residents. It's really the will of the board. And that can be, and across the board, rule or it can be committee by committee. Provided, I guess, that there is some reason why these committees are treated differently than the others. But there's, no one has any, you know, rights to serve on a committee that they can sue the town and say, you know, I'm the, I'm the out-of-state, out-of-town resident, but I want to serve on a committee. And we have a rule saying, you know, residents only, there's no right that they have to serve on a committee. It really is the will of the board. And you can do it across the board, committee by committee, however, however the board wants to do it.
So Mr. Bellflower's motion was to make four of them residents? And three of them,
Can.
Possibly three of them.
Mm-hmm.
MIA.
Could, could, could be a MIA. And that's across all of our committees.
Okay, we have this motion.
On all the committees?
He just made a motion.
The motion came in, so.
Yeah.
We have extended the, the application time until, I think it was September eighteenth, on when that last meeting was sent. We could receive more in-town applications by then, uh, just something to keep in mind. I don't know if you want to set a hard number of people.
Our other committees are full, right? Do we have seven on the others? I don't think we have a, do we have any vacancies right now?
Board of Adjustments.
The Board of Adjustments, the only one?
The Board of Adjustments.
Right.
And, and one thing you could do is, is not have it as a rule that we have to have four residents. We have to have, you know, three non-residents or three, the other three, but you just set it as a, kind of a preference that we,
No more than or?
Well, the, the,
The majority.
Preferably the majority be residents, but, you know, if you don't get a, a form of residence that, that applies, you would have the flexibility, let's say you have seven applications and four are non-residents. You know, you could have the flexibility to, to have four non-residents, three residents, if that's all that applies. So you could set it as a, you know, when, when possible, the board would make up a majority of town residents for as long as required, and that gives you, you know, flexibility if you chose to.
Well, couldn't you, couldn't you do just as has been done, as committee by committee as needed? Instead of making it a blanket thing, because we're trying to encourage to have our committees made up of seven residents of Hope Mills. So if you start allowing it to be one or the other, but if you just as needed, I know when we did the Economic Development Committee, we just made that a separate, uh, ruling as a board that the Economic Development Committee could be made up of people that were, had businesses in the town or people that had outside interests. Uh, and then when the committee was disbanded, you know, it didn't affect all the other committees. You know, so you get a new mayor in, there may not be a Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee. You know, there may not be a Prime Movers. This might be, you know, that's where I think with these special committees like this, do we need to go in and affect everything we do or just take it as need, as we go, need by? We, we did the same thing with the Lake Advisory Committee, if you'll remember. When I set that committee up, that committee was made up of Hope Mills residents. We had non-voting members that were sitting on that committee that had an interest because of their techni, their talents or whatever they had been involved in. But when that committee, um, you know, when we had an opportunity, we tried to make that committee all, um, Hope Mills residents. We didn't, we, but we had exceptions to it. So I'm just wondering if we go by the motion he's just made, that would just affect the two committees that currently have, uh, non-residents or MIA people. And then if we did come to a need that one of these other committees needed to have members, we could come back and say, this year, because it's a year-to-year thing. So I think that's, that way we don't change everything long-term, have to go back in and rewrite. Because you know, we've got that policy about each committee already rewritten, already written. Does that make sense? In other words?
Well, Madam Mayor.
Why change a policy if you don't have to?
The two, the, the two that, that we're talking about would, wouldn't necessarily be standing committees, they would be special committees. And see, and if you look at it in that view, then it's different. Because your youth is a special committee. It's not a standing committee, it's a special committee from year to year. You just said so.
Well, yeah.
And the, and the, yeah, so if we were to.
By its name, you know it's a mayor's committee, but the next mayor may choose not to do that.
That's right, but it's not a standing committee. So special committees, we could actually do that.
Okay.
And so that's the reason why I asked, I mean, are we talking about standing committees? Because if we're doing that, then you're looking at Parks and Rec, Appearance, Veterans Affairs. You're looking at committees that regardless of the results of any election, those committees remain in place until a full board comes in and either continues the committees or not.
That's true, and this one may, may not be the same thing. I mean, you know, I might not be here next year. Somebody may not want to work with the millennials.
Yeah.
So it could be, I mean, it's, it's a special committee that I had a passion for, um, that I was really interested in, and the gentleman that I just said inboxed me, he works with every youth in the county. That's what he does. He works with youth, he works with young people. So, I mean, I was like, one of the reasons why are we going to turn him down because he lives in Grace Creek? So, I mean, you know, so, yeah, it, it's different because I'm asking, this is a special committee that I came up with, that I have a special passion for. And if I'm not here next year, somebody might not want to do it anymore. The board might vote to dissolve it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
At your last meeting, you voted to make this a standing committee.
I thought we did.
I still ask, in one of your meetings, we changed the ordinance to add this.
As a standing committee.
Standing committee. The Mayor's Leadership Committee is not in that list of standing committees and that it changes.
Right.
It only runs through the school year.
Right.
And you have a whole new committee every,
Every school year.
At the beginning of every school year.
So if we were to change this to a special committee and not have it a standing committee, would you be, would you amend your motion, Commissioner Mar- Marley? To approve this committee as a special committee?
If she's fine, we'd.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
So how do I need to word that?
Just let her find what y'all are doing, what I can do is, you're going to make a separate rule for standing committees and special committees. Standing committees, you're still going to have the residency requirement. But special committees, are you going to remove the residency requirement altogether? Or are you going to make it such that, you know, majority still needs to be residency?
I think the major, yeah, the majority should be residency.
Majority still should be Hope Mills residents.
Yeah, okay.
Is that your motion?
Your motion should, you should say.
I mean, you tell me what, how it needs to read now.
You would like, you would, you're making a motion that, that, that we have two special committees.
My motion originally was to approve.
The motion should be, in fact, what, it may be easier just to withdraw the prior motion and then to do that.
Okay, withdraw your.
It's a different thing.
Thank you.
I will withdraw my prior motion.
Okay.
And then I, as I understand, what the board is wanting to do is to create a policy or revise the policy such that the residency requirement remains for standing committees. So it's amended for, um, temporary or special committees to allow non-residents to serve, but still maintain a majority where available, um, residents.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
That would be my motion, ma'am. I would like to put that.
Into a form of a motion.
Into a form of a motion.
All right, the, our standing committees will remain, uh, as they are listed. Our special committees now will be, uh, a majority of those will be residents of Hope Mills allowing for some, uh, to be in our MIA. And, um, that would include the Mayor's Youth Leadership and our Prime Movers Committee. That will be the two specials at this time.
So I guess as part of the motion, we are converting the Prime Movers from a standing committee to a special.
So your Prime Movers now becomes a special committee.
Right.
I have a motion with all that. Do we have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Good.
Seeing none opposed. Thank you very much.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, the next thing we have is discussion of a walkthrough of the temporary police station. I was, on this note, what I was going to ask is if we could just, could we not just arrange it as a, by commissioner visit? Because if you have to go, I think it would, I don't know how Chief of Charity feels about it, but I think it would be better to, than having all of us and have to have, uh, a notice of quorum and all that.
That's what we were going to suggest.
That's good.
If you do it two at a time, that'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, and that's good. I just wanted, oh, excuse me, Madam Mayor. I just, I just wanted an opportunity to, to go in and look at the temporary police station. That's all.
Would you want to, what, you want to work through the town manager to set that up? Would that be okay with you, Chief of Charity?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then would, would set it up, uh, two at a time?
Whichever's.
One or two.
Okay, one or two, okay.
Okay.
Maybe as available, whoever is available. That'll work, okay.
I've done been there, I don't have to go.
Okay, so we.
One, one down.
But I wanted to hang.
One down.
One down, we just got to go. Okay, so we got that one. That one's covered. All right, next we have, um, manager's report. Anything to add to your report, ma'am?
Um, yes, I'm, um, two items real quick. One is to let you all know that the Special Events Committee met and approved, um, the Carolina Liberty 3K sponsored by the Carolina Liberty Running Club and organized by Mr. Jesse L. Autry. It will be held at the Golfy Greenway on September fifth, beginning at 8:00 AM. Mr. Autry is aware that he may only have twenty-five participants at a time and is planning to have heats, so I guess different, um, they'll be grouped into, um, you know, no more than twenty-five at different times. Um, in order to limit the number of participants on the grounds at the time. The club will provide porta-potties and, um, will, um, Parks and Rec Director, um, Lamarcus Morrison is working with Mr. Autry to facilitate any, um, or accommodate any overflow party. Wanted to let you all know about that. And then, um, also, at the request of the law back, at the request of Commissioner Marley, I contacted our part-time Assistant Fire Marshal, Bobby Carter, about the possibility of the Board of Commissioners and some staff, um, going to tour the MTCC Sprint Lake Law Enforcement Training Facility. Bobby is an instructor there. Um, so, and we had, I had given you all one day back in August. He has given me another day, um, September twenty-fourth, beginning at nine o'clock and finishing twelve o'clock. So I wanted you all to keep that in mind. If you could let me know, um, maybe by, um,
What day is that on?
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday?
Thursday, September twenty-fourth. It's the week of our board meeting, so, but it would be that call on Thursday. If you could let me know within the next week whether or not, I'd like to let him know.
What are the times?
Well, we would have to start at nine o'clock and we would finish at noon.
At Spring Lake.
And, and since Spring Lake.
Yeah.
I think I can do that. I can do that.
I'm, I'm, I'm clear. Long as it's a Thursday, oh yeah, as long as it's a Thursday.
I just have to be back on that campus by twelve-thirty. That's what, that's fine.
You say it was Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday to twenty.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth.
Thursday, the twenty-fourth, beginning at nine o'clock, yeah. Okay, so so far I have Commissioner Bellflowers, Mayor Potem McCray, Mayor, Commissioner Marley. And then if the others, if you could just let me know, um, if you can make it, if I should relax.
I'm going to try.
Just let me know, but that, we'll have to do a notice, um,
Possible form.
Notice the form for that, but it is just a tour and to be able to look at the facility and, and also to interact with some of the equipment that they have, so. And I had planned to go and, um, also if, um, town clerk would like to go and, um, or administrative assistant. Thank you. That's it?
All righty. Okay, we have reminders and then, um, committee liaison updates. Uh, Commissioner Edwards, do you have anything from?
Me, 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 Carolina will not meet until next month. Um, the Appearance Commission met August twenty-fifth. They discussed some Christmas events because they still want to get involved in Christmas. They're going to do a porch parade and, um, like they did, um, what was the other one they did?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, but this will be Christmas decorations and everything. They are also coming up with Village of Trees. They're going to have, um, different, um, businesses, nonprofits, um, individuals that want to decorate trees and they will, and it's going to be up and down Hope Mills Road and going towards Parks and Rec. And there will be judged and, um, but they have to be tasteful. And they're also, um, the two panel boxes at the lake, they've got signs made that they're put up there and they're going to put up some plants. One of the signs is, um, uh, Welcome to Hope Mills. The other one, Lamarcus is having Dennis Brechner redo and have waves put on it on the lake. And, um, then they got three hundred dollars allocated for plants, mulch and potting soil. And they're going to start planting, um, September nineteenth at nine AM. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Legg, Historic Preservation and Rulak?
Yes, ma'am. The Historic Preservation Commission met, I guess, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. And what they wanted to do was take a tour of the, of the Future Museum and the church. And I think Bruce met them to, or Bruce or Don one met them to, uh, let them in to do that tour. And they were wanting to know, and they haven't presented it yet, it was just in discussion about possible funding from the board to help purchase stuff to go in the museum. And, uh, Rulak, I was out of town with my granddaughter at a doctor's appointment and didn't get back in time to attend that meeting by phone.
Okay, thank you. Brian, Commissioner Marley, the Veterans Affairs?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the Veterans Affairs Committee met, um, they, they are planning on moving forward their, uh, Veterans Day ceremony. However, it will be, uh, scaled back somewhat. They are planning to, uh, put the flags out. The, uh, committee members will be the one that's conducting the, um, ceremony. They're planning on, uh, putting it live on social media and not having it, um, open to the public. To cut down on the crowd and, um, they asked that you be in attendance, mayor, to read the proclamation. I told them that if you weren't able to do it, that I would be glad to step in. Um, if you could make it, but they did request that you be in attendance.
Okay, and that's on, that's actual, that's on Veterans Day, eleven, okay?
So um, other than that, they had a lot of good discussion on some other items that I informed uh, Ms. Adams about. So um, have more to come later, hopefully.
Okay, all right, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Parks and Rec, and Air Quality Stakeholders?
Uh, the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee has not met again. And the Parks and Rec Committee actually, um, I see that the town manager, well, her report, she has a very extensive report from Mr. Morrison, so I don't have anything new to report. Yeah, it's very detailed. The only thing we, um, on September, the only thing I would like to highlight is that on September the eighteenth is the date that he is supposed to find out if we um, give the project correct. So keep your fingers crossed for that.
September eighteenth. All right, sounds good. Um, Mayor's Youth Leadership has not started yet. We're hoping to get that off the ground uh, soon. Uh, FAMPO, uh, don't have, didn't, uh, have not had a meeting since our last meeting. And the Federal Economic Development Council Municipal Advisory Meeting has not had a meeting at all. So I'm not sure when they'll meet. And then my senior Tarheel has liked, um, Commissioner Edwards, that meeting is not going to be until next month. So we're kind of waiting there till, to find out what's happening with the COVID. Um, one thing I was going to ask, and I don't know, this is not probably the best time to do it, but I know that when, uh, Mr. McLaughlin's not here, I know that we've looked at, of course, there's, in your report was about the Gateway Plant uh, Project and stuff. But I know we were looking at the Main Street, what we could do with Main Street. Uh, the most recent building that became vacant on Main Street has now, like, the rest that have become vacant, it's storage. So is there not something we can do to look at our business fronts, being the property owner? Then, i- in other words, what's happening on Trade Street is there's, the businesses that are there uh, are, need support, and there's no, there's no businesses because of what's happening with the, the vacant buildings are becoming storage. So I don't know how, I don't know what we can do, if there's anything within our codes. Uh, but that's just concerning, because if we were going to do something with the Main Street plan, um, we wouldn't get their support because we don't have anything happening as far as but anyway, that's just something I'd like to draw attention to right now. All right, staff comments? Do we have any? None? None? No? All right, official comments? Do we have any?
I do.
All righty.
I'll say it again, I appreciate everybody's comments um, on the project over here. And I am serious in my comments as to, if, if there's that big of a traffic hazard over there, I would request that all those residents over there, please involve our police department and um, have them come out, take a look at that, see if we can't solve that problem for them. I'm sure the police department will be willing to come out. Um, Mr. Durrell there that came out, he lives in my neighborhood, and I know I call Hope Mills PD on the regular about uh, traffic concerns coming through, uh, William Bill Luther there, as well as him. And I know Greeley Mitchell and some other neighbors of mine, and they will come out and they will uh, stop some people and they will slow some people down. So uh, uh, please make sure that you do that. Thank you.
Okay, any others?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, Madam Mayor, I would just like to thank the board for um, the consideration with my committee tonight. I know that was a stretch for Hope Mills, so I'd like to thank you all for entertaining that idea. And I heard that the citizen, she said that some of us had the, the, we were saying that because we deal with it, they should deal with it. I apologize if that's what the takeaway was from the last meeting. What I was saying is that I, I sympathize with you and I understand what you're saying. I wasn't saying it as I live this way and this happened to me, and so it should happen to you. So I, I apologize if that's what the takeaway of that was. And I think that's all that I wanted to say.
Commissioner Legg?
Again, I want to apologize for my phone ringing. My brother did have a stroke today in Ohio and just screwed my mind about shutting it off. And I'd like for all of you to remember him in your prayers. And uh, hopefully the good Lord will, will keep him with us for a while longer. And I, I want to thank everybody for the comments they made, both by email and uh, in person tonight. And uh, I want those people to know that we haven't left them over there on the street corner by themselves. We uh, we get these emails and notices from the town clerk all the time. Every time somebody sends one in, she sends it to us. And like Mr. Marley said, we don't normally respond to that kind of uh, stuff on the agenda. But at this time, I think it's time to know that we hear them. We hear them. We do. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, and I would just reiterate that. I think that oftentimes with the number of emails that we get, and we're all getting the same email, um, if we can channel that through our town manager so that she can actually give an answer, and it would be a matching answer. I think that's the hard part, is when you've got all, all of us uh, trying to respond. Uh, if I acknowledge, especially if I notice that it's something that I believe uh, is uh, the misinformation, I will try to channel it toward Ms. Adams so she can give them correct information. But I do hope that um, we can uh, that we're not being, uh, we are being very transparent in that what we're working toward is having a driveway on Golf View so that that way, um, it'll eliminate that additional traffic in, in that neighborhood. But we've got to get through this process, and we're hoping it'll move along quicker now. All right, next we have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven A three, Attorney Client Privilege and NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven A six, to discuss the personnel matter.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We'll see you all September the
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. That's a long time for us